But we will begin this meeting. However, ladies and gentlemen, if I could ask you all to please be a bit quiet so we can conduct the business of the board, I'd appreciate it. I want to thank all of the community members who have joined us this evening for our discussion about boundary policy. That agenda item is actually scheduled for 6:00 PM this evening. Just a few points about school board work sessions. No vote to any boundary policy will be taken this evening. Work sessions are designed for the board and the staff to continue to discuss issues that will come before the board at a regular business meeting in the future. There is not a public comment period at our work sessions. This is the fourth meeting of the board in which we've discussed the boundary policy. And last October, there was a review of common practices for boundary changes. And in February, the board reviewed educational research on boundary policies and related FCPs practices. And in March, the board again spoke about the goals of boundary policies and factors to prioritize in a boundary policy. And so tonight, we're scheduled to continue those discussions. The current review of the boundary policy is part of an overall strategy to address growth in the county and overcrowding in several schools. The school board has been reviewing the policy to ensure that we have equity and effectiveness when considering school boundaries. And any potential boundary adjustment will be discussed and decided through a very transparent process that engages the full community. And so please be assured that we welcome your input and any sort of changes to our policy will engage the community. But now, at 5 o'clock, we're running a few minutes late, we are welcoming our Facilities Planning Advisory Council's annual report. And before we continue with the annual report, we want to thank Karen Hogan for all of your excellent work that you have offered as the chair, as the inaugural chair of the Facilities Planning Advisory Council since its beginning and contributed nine years of work in support of our students and families here in Fairfax County. So a heartfelt thank you, Karen, for all of the work you've done.
It's been a wonderful nine years, and I'm going to miss my friends and colleagues. And I can't tell you what a good group of people that you have put together over the years. It's evolved and changed, but continuously, it's been a great group of people to work with. And as you have seen in our annual reports, the recommendations that we put together are very helpful to the school community. So before I start, I'd just like to introduce Charlie Hooky, who is our secretary. And in the scenes is Howie Perlstein. He is the rep from Hunter Mill. And you are from?
Braddock.
Braddock. So with that, I'd like to go to the agenda for tonight. Just an outline of what we're going to cover. On our members, we have three members whose three-year terms -- okay. We have three members whose three-year terms have expired this year. And I'd like to thank you for reappointing Charlie Hooky for another three-year term. We have four departing members. So you have already appointed new FPAC members. Rick Ballard, from the Lee District, is leaving and will be replaced by Troy Thompson. Scott Higgins, who served for Mount Vernon for several years and was very productive on our committee, has been replaced by Kathy Hoseck. We welcome Kathy. She's attended a lot of our meetings. Simea Byrd, who is an at-large member aligned with Mr. Moon's seat, is being replaced by Dan Hogan. You may recognize the name. He is my stepson. So I'm happy to say the next generation is going to be continuing work on FPAC. The remaining vacancy, which is my at-large seat, is aligned with Ms. Kies-Gamara, and CPDC is recruiting to fill that position. We've arranged the report to highlight the most significant recommendations in the executive summary. All 25 recommendations that we're making this year are grouped according to the annual charge and additional areas of interest, which this year were energy efficiency and relationship with the county. The remainder of the report is organized with significant findings and recommendations for each area of our annual charge and for the additional areas of interest. The appendix contains the detailed reports of our work in each area. In the activity section, we cover the meetings, our retreat, committee participation, community outreach, and suggestions for next year's annual charge. Charge that you gave us for last school year asked us to look into areas to develop a long-range vision for facilities, work on asset management requirements, do an assessment of safety and security of the FCPs facilities, help develop a CIP with both major maintenance and capacity requirements, and make recommendations for updating the boundary policies and processes. This presentation highlights the most significant recommendations, as pointed out in the executive summary, but all the recommendations will be mentioned as we go through. Specifically, in the area of long-range vision, FPAC recommends that the school board develop and adopt a long-range vision for its school facilities. Such a vision would drive facility-related decisions. In that, we suggest that you cover the following areas. The cohort preservation, facility use, considering both capacity and programs, time and distance traveled, and of course, work in the One Fairfax concepts that are a part of our county's As relates to the major maintenance and asset-
Gentlemen in the audience, please be respectful for our presenters. Thank you.
As relates to the major maintenance and asset management requirements, FPAC recommends that FCPs provide support to the facilities maintenance staff to complete the asset management inventory and assessment, and to create an asset management plan consisting of both periodic maintenance and major capital investments. A summary of the assessments and capital requirements should be included in the CIP. Also shown is the way that the safety and security requirements would be included in both the asset management plan and the CIP. In the area of safety and security, FPAC recommends that FCPs implement safety and incident response training for teachers and staff in schools on an annual or semi-annual basis, based on the building type and usage. This particular one we highlighted because we felt that even though training is currently conducted, it needs to be more frequently conducted in most of our schools. In addition, we recommend that FCPs ensure the ed specs, specifically the design component, include all needed safety and security measures for new schools and any building renovations during pre-construction planning and final build-out. FCPs should develop a plan to fund the installation of closed-circuit TVs in all middle schools and selected elementary schools. Existing policies should be expanded as needed to document the measures used to prioritize installation and use of CCTVs in elementary schools. We also recommend that FCPs continue to coordinate and partner with mental health professionals in the schools to help assess potential threats. We have a few more on safety and security. We recommend that FCPs develop a plan to survey, assess, and prioritize safety and security needs at every school in FCPs. This information could then be used to develop an asset management system and a deferred projects list for future needs, and possible inclusion in the CIP. Existing policies should be expanded as needed to ensure that the facility surveys are completed annually. We recommend that FCPs create an enhanced environmental health assessment plan and funding for implementation to regularly investigate potential hazards such as lead in water, air quality, copper-led piping within existing buildings. Existing policies should be expanded as needed to ensure that these assessments are completed annually. Finally, that FCPs increase funding for the measures mentioned through additional staff positions, grant partnerships, IT solutions, and the maintenance of all implemented measures. As relates to including maintenance requirements in the CIP, FPAC recommends that all building or facility assets and all sources of funding related to maintenance and construction of capital assets should be included in the CIP. So all FCPs facilities would be included, not just the K-12 school buildings, but also academies, special facilities, staff office buildings, such as this one, repurposed prior school buildings, et cetera. All of them require maintenance and renovation. All capital funding, regardless of the source, should be included in the CIP. Presently, the CIP includes the bond funding, but not the $13.1 million transfer from the Board of Supervisors or other maintenance funds from the operating budget. The CIP should include details of major maintenance, details of maintenance backlog, and details of how far behind industry standards FCPs is. The CIP should show the increase in deferred maintenance over time. The next recommendation is probably one that is most significant in terms of a change to process for FCPs. We recommend the following. FCPs should adopt the industry-standard process of conducting regularly scheduled, planned major and minor maintenance on a continuous basis, rather than conducting full building renovations. So that's not on the slide. That is in our recommendations, and it's an important change that we're recommending because we've seen that industry has changed the way that it does renovations, given that none of us have enough money and we can't get around to the buildings we need to renovate on a good schedule. In the area of boundaries, as relates to developing and implementing boundary policies and processes, FPAC recommends that the school board establish to prioritize list of criteria for boundary adjustments. We also recommend that you establish triggers that would determine the need for a boundary study. FPAC is pleased to see that the draft boundary policy you will be considering following this presentation contains both reasons for a boundary study and considerations. In addition, FPAC recommends that FCPs should consider boundary adjustments when making decisions regarding adding capacity during school renovations. And following school renovations, FCPs should revisit capacity imbalances and make any necessary boundary adjustments at that time. FCPs should establish a boundary change timeline that takes into consideration the timing and impact of the opening of the New Western High School. During school year 19 to 20, conduct a county-wide boundary study to address current overcrowding in the middle and high school levels, using an independent consultant and the school board's boundary adjustment criteria. We also recommend that prior to opening the New Western High School, you conduct a county-wide boundary study to include that new school, using an independent consultant and the school board's boundary adjustment criteria. FCPs should optimize bus routes as part of implementing new boundaries, and the school board should take additional action to reduce the number of students who transfer out of their base schools. FCPs staff should continue to improve coordination between facilities and transportation services and instructional services, and conduct a facility impact assessment to include transportation for instructional program changes. As relates to energy efficiency, FPAC recommends that FCPs establish an energy savings performance contract that includes as many major maintenance items as possible and practical. FCPs should ensure savings from energy efficiencies are returned to the facility maintenance budget. Use of an energy performance contract will help achieve both efficient use of energy and cost savings which should be made available for maintenance. As relates to the relationship with the county, FPAC recommends that the school board continue to work with the Board of Supervisors to address the many goals and issues they have in common. FCPs staff work with the county staff to develop an integrated major maintenance and renovation plan for all county buildings, including FCPs buildings. We should be comparing bond money spent per square foot of building space, compare county renovation cycle to school renovation cycle, account for the extended hours of heavy use of FCPs facilities, and document communication improvements that can help both parties work together during a project. And tonight, when you talk about the CPDC role, I think you'll be talking about some of those issues as well. In conclusion, the 2019 to 2020 annual charge, as shown here, was approved by the board at the July 11 meeting. Most of these are staff actions to accomplish, but FPAC can provide insight, input, and focus in these areas. We want to thank Jeff and his staff for all the great support during the year. We especially appreciate the regular participation and open sharing on the part of Kevin Snead and Jessica Gillis, including Jessica's participation in our retreat. We appreciate the opportunity to present our annual report, and we'll be happy to respond to questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hogan. I am now opening the floor to questions. Board members, do we have any questions? Yes, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. You mentioned energy savings, plans, and accounts. And I know that in the last year, the Board of Supervisors have made changes so that we will, as a county, be able to participate in some additional contractual agreements, whether it's for solar. And I guess that's my question, what else? Because you've mentioned in your report, continuing to look at energy savings arrangements that would save us money and help pay for other upgrades in our buildings. Would you like to expand on your recommendation in that area?
Yes. The contracts that are available through the state allow for an energy management company to come in and do an assessment and identify ways that they could help us save energy. And part of that is, could be things like replacing HVAC systems or some other things that are very costly and would take a lot of upfront investment on our part to do. But the energy company will do those if they can project that they can see savings that are created over the life of the contract, which is a long-term contract. And several of our research efforts have turned up evidence that people are really benefiting from this and getting some major influx of capital investment into the heavy equipment that's behind some of the energy savings. It's not an idea of go around, replace the light bulbs. It's like get some of this big stuff that costs a lot of money that needs to be replaced, taken care of. And then it's basically financed over time by the savings.
I have one follow-up question.
Please.
What do you recommend is used to, as a metric or a baseline, to determine savings in energy and utility costs?
I think we have a lot of data in the system, and we've met with the staff that works in the energy area, and I think you can rely on them to provide reliable baseline data about where we are today in our costs. And then if we can get someone to help us look ahead in terms of a contract effort, you can see what projections there are for the savings.
Thank you.
So we have Ms. Evans?
Thank you. And again, Karen, thank you so much for your nine years at the helm here. You've done an excellent job. So just a couple of things. I appreciate that the things that you focused on in this year's report very much dovetail with what CPDC wants to include in its mission, which, as you mentioned, we'll be talking about later on today. One of the things that we looked at was things like the amount of bond funding that we have, the renovation queue, and particularly doing more coordination with the county, which I think is going to be critical moving forward to make sure that we're able to renovate our buildings as quickly as we should be renovating our buildings. I only had one question. You said that it wasn't in the presentation, but about not doing full renovations. I have to, that is a red flag for me because, you know, we tried this in the 1980s, and that's how we got into a pickle with Falls Church High School, which is, of course, still several years away from being renovated. So, you know, we put ourselves in a very bad position with these partial renovations. So what is your thinking? And, you know, certainly, I'm not going to do anything that's going to slow down or be anything less than a full renovation of a school that's waited for decades for a renovation like Falls Church has.
We would not recommend an immediate switch and elimination of the current plans for renovations. But what we are saying is that across the board, people are changing how they do these things, and it's something important to understand and to look at. And I think the real key is to have an asset management plan, so that if you know what the status of your inventory is in your facilities and all your assets, and what their projected life cycle is, you know when things should be replaced and upgraded and fixed. So with that, you have a more independent, non-political plan for renovating, so that you can say, okay, these schools need a new roof this year, these schools need some new HVAC this year, these schools need bathrooms renovated, whatever it is, it's on the plan. And so, but the key is to have an understanding of what your assets are and when they need to be upgraded and replaced. That's why we put the emphasis on that asset management.
Right. I think we'll have to think long and hard about that, though, because, you know, whenever I talked about, for example, putting a sprinkler system in there, since Falls Church is the last one that doesn't have a sprinkler system as a high school, it was always, well, it's going to cost too much because they're going to get a full renovation. What about the wiring in the school? Well, it costs too much because they're going to get a full renovation. So I wouldn't want to do it halfway and then say, okay, now you're not going to have a full renovation, you know? So I appreciate you being thoughtful about that. If there are things that we can do in the meantime while schools are waiting for renovations, you know, improving the bathrooms, improving HVAC, things like that, a roof. We do roofs all the time, though. You know, we replace roofs all the time. So I don't think that would be a novel change. Anyway, that was the only question and the point that I want to make at this point. Thank you again for all your work.
Well, our other concern on that is, of course, how the renovation cycle is getting longer and longer and longer. So once Falls Church gets renovated here in a couple of years, it's going to be like 40 years till they come back.
I know. And that, again, is where CPDC agrees with that, that we need to be, well, and this board clearly agrees with that, that we do need more bond funding. We can't be waiting 40 years to renovate schools, particularly when we have to add capacity. You talked about the Western High School, and we're only growing these days. So, you know, we need to do something about that.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Darinette Kovacs.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen. Thank you so much for your years of work. I know how dedicated you've been, and everything that you have done has always been with the utmost professionalism, and I really do appreciate your time and energy dedicated to this group. So thank you so much. And thank all members of FPAC because Karen's just leaving us now, so that's why I had to say that. But I do appreciate these recommendations, and I know a lot of people here tonight are here for the next conversations. But you do, on page 11, you talk about the boundary. So just for understanding, and this may be staff, the opening of the Western High School, that's going to be approximately what time in the, it's?
I think it's toward 2030, somewhere in that range.
Towards 2030. Okay. All right. So that's important to note for people to understand. And your recommendation was to, excuse me, it's hard to hear here if we, thank you so much. And so I appreciate that. And if you can expand a little bit on what you see, how you would feel an independent consultant would be useful to our board in this process?
Well, there's a couple of things. One, it brings independence. But more importantly, there are consultants that have lots of really good automated tools that can help take the data that we have and feed it into their automated tool and come up with some boundary solution options. And they can include the criteria that you specify. So it's more about them having access to these kinds of systems that they can use to help generate a variety of options, what-ifs, for the school board to consider, which would be a lot more efficient than staff time trying to figure it out.
Ms. Darinette Kovacs, before you go to your next question, I would like to let everybody in the room and out in the hallway know that we are preparing an overflow room. And as soon as that is available, we will make that announcement so that people can go to the overflow room and be able to observe what is happening here with our presentations. We do have a limit of 102 people in this room, and so we are at capacity. So we're trying to accommodate the many members of our community and make sure that we provide an opportunity for them to be able to fully observe what we're doing at this work session. So Ms. Darinette Kovacs, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have right now, Madam Chair. And again, thank you, Karen, and maybe we can call upon you for consulting services with your son. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo my colleagues in thanking you for your nine years of service, and also Mr. Hooky as well, even on the FPAC for a long time as well, as a fellow product district A lot of recommendations in your report, and seems to be more than usual.
A little more.
Probably, as you are leaving FPAC, you want to give us a few more ideas to consider, which is good, which is good. I'm hoping that we'll get staff responses to every one of these recommendations sometime in the fall, so that if the board decides to have a more in-depth discussion about those recommendations, because obviously, you know, we're not going to be able to address each one of those 26 tonight before 6:00, because we only have one hour allotted for this. You know, having said that, having said that, a lot of interesting recommendations I saw as I was reading the report. But have you, as you were developing, as FPAC was developing recommendations, have you considered a financial implications, cost implications of recommendations, or those were just off your radar screen and you were just trying to give us the ideas for us to
We don't have a good way to assess the cost of the recommendations, so that may be something that if there's some that you're interested in pursuing, that staff should really prepare something for you on what those costs would be. We do recognize that there's a lot of demands on the budget and that the classroom is first, and our children are first. But the facilities are important, and without that, we can't deliver the education that we want to. So no, we have not put a price tag on our recommendations.
Okay. Especially those recommendations with a price tag, that I guess, you know, that has to come from staff as, you know, they look at these recommendations, knowing the financial implications would help the board in making the decisions. And whether FPAC has an opportunity to think about even giving us a prioritized list of recommendations, whatever, for those recommendations with the financial implications, rather than simply doing a policy changes.
One of the reasons that we want to be sure to include everything that we know of or anticipate in the CIP is to make that document a little bit more of a roadmap as to what we need and not make it fit into what we have. And that's what, at the moment, we're making the CIP fit the money we have. And in some cases, we're not outlining all our needs. And I think that by these recommendations say, let's- our needs. And I think that by these recommendations say, let's get the capital asset needs into not just the new schools and the renovations, but get all of our needs reflected in the CIP.
Okay. Thank you. And since I have 13 seconds left, I may have to put back on a go-back list, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Moon, we will put you on the go-back list. I have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Palchek.
So, just for clarity, because we do happen to have so many community members here, the facilities planning and advisory committee is an advisory committee to the board made up of people, unlike all of our other committees, who actually have to submit resumes and go through a process. So, they all have background in advising us. So, this is, you know, the portion before the portion that a lot of people hear. But I do want to ask some specifics. If you could go to slide nine on your, on your presentation, at the bottom, the one that has the, yeah. So, this is one of my major concerns, and really what the board should be focused on, rather than the thing that we're going to be talking about next. We have an imbalance, and what I think this slide is trying to show is we have an imbalance of the amount of facility space that the school board has in its purview. We have about 60% of the total public facilities, but we only have about 40% of the money. So, the Board of Supervisors has about 40% of the facilities and about 60% of the money. Plus, the issue on the maintenance of those facilities is how hard a school is used, because it's, you know, community use, whereas, you know, a supervisor office isn't used community use until 11:00 at night by sports, and on the weekends for religious activities, and more sports, and, you know, scouts, and all those things. And so, we have a problem in that imbalance, is what I think this is trying to show. This is what I think the board should be spending time on, and that the CPDC presentation will be. The one thing I did not see listed in here is the million and a half square feet of education space that children are learning in trailers. And I know, I'm pretty sure that you all talked about that in part. So, part of my question is, where did that appear in this? And then, on the security side, I was just asking about this last week. In the audit wrap-up and in our year-end budget passage, which we're about to do, we have $80 million that's rolling over, and none of the security concerns from the security report that we got last summer were addressed. And so, if you go down to slide 14 here on the recommendations, I see that you have on here incorporate facility safety and security requirements, not just in the capital planning process, but what I asked Superintendent Braybrand was, in the budget, in the quarterly budget review, and in the year-end budget review, is look at holding back money to address unfinished security concerns, because people want their kids to go to school in safe schools, and people want to go to school and, or go to work in safe administrative facilities. So, could you comment a little bit on the trailers, and on some of the security concerns, as opposed to the boundary issue, which we'll be talking about next?
And Ms. Schultz, am I putting you on a go-back?
You can put me on, but I'm going to try to preserve our time for our, our community members who are here for the next conversation.
So, the trailers are included in the slide on the side that has the assets. So, what we were trying to get at with that, if we could go back to that slide, Charlie, with the CIP in the middle. So, what we were trying to show was that we have a lot of assets that need maintenance and growth over time. And on the other side, we have funding sources. And the CIP, in our view, should really marry those up. But you're right, once you do that, you can go to the county and say, look, look at what we have. We have this much asset, and we have this much money. So, that effort would support those conversations with the Board of Supervisors.
So, the trailer elimination program of sorts would be in the top-left as part of our school sites. They are part of our assets, as we speak.
But that's also a security concern, too.
Definitely.
And then on the, in both, in almost every area, you're going to find some things that are operational and some things that are capital. And so, there are operational costs for security, like training. That's not a capital investment. That needs to be addressed through the normal operating budget process, including the year-end review and allocation. And what we're suggesting is that the capital piece of security requirements be included in the CIP as part of our asset management.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. I have Ms. Palchek, followed by Mr. McElveen.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen, so much for your years of service, and Charles, for being here tonight, as community members who put in countless hours. And we appreciate your independent look at this. I, following up on some of what my colleagues were saying and asking, I do appreciate your lengthy recommendations, and would like us to figure out how we move forward on some of those and prioritize them. I guess I have a couple of questions, and I'll be brief tonight. The first one was, following up on what Sandy was saying, while it does sound nice to follow this industry standard, or the different type of renovation cycle, I guess it would be interesting to be able to understand more what that would mean for a school system, what that would mean for entire school buildings, because, yes, we do constantly, you know, update HVAC and roofs and other components in bathrooms, labs, et cetera, but want to make sure that, as you mentioned, our renovation cycle has grown quite lengthy, and longer than it should be, that we're making sure that students do have, you know, those facilities that they need to feel safe, to be healthy, and to be able to learn appropriately. So, would love to discuss that further, but I understand that the, the energy management, it's wonderful, and was wondering if we could maybe recommend that to our new joint environmental task force, again, with the county, and you made those recommendations, as well as with the asset management plan. So, would love to maybe hear a little bit more, A, I know I haven't, we haven't discussed this in any of the schools committee meetings with the planning commission. I don't know if you or our counterparts have been able to start discussing with the county about joint asset management plans. Absolutely agree, we have to take into account not just the school buildings themselves, but all of our facilities, and the amount of county use, community use, which we want to continue to preserve, but knowing that sometimes it's 17, 18-hour days, taking that into account so that we do have appropriate, you know, schools for the kids and for the community use. So, I guess that one seems very important to me, and I agree with Ms. Schultz, that we need to make sure that the funding is appropriate for all of that use. So, I don't know if you have any kind of immediate next steps, or from the current conversations we've had, what you think would be, as you leave us, a good way to continue to move that forward?
Well, I think, first of all, the schools committee is not the place to talk about that, because they don't have purview over the budget and the broader issues of development and everything that we care about. But I do think that the CPDC, I've been working with Elizabeth and her committee and meeting with them, and I think they're on the right track to opening the conversation with the Board of Supervisors at the right level. And I think that's key. And once you get that and get on the board, on the par with your counterparts, I think that it'll be much easier to have those conversations about the needs.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Mr. McElveen has stepped away from the table, so I'm going to Ms. Hines.
Thank you very much. And a lot of my questions have been asked and answered. I just wanted to focus a little bit, again, on the energy efficiency recommendations, just a couple of things. You may be aware that the county board and the school board have put together a joint environmental task force that actually will start meeting with community members and students who have been named to the task force in September. And the hope is that we'll be able to combine the county and the school system in that effort to convert to renewables, to be more sustainable and energy efficient in our facilities and transportation. And so, I had a couple of questions about your charge on energy efficiency. One is that I noticed it's not in your charge for, your suggested charge for next year. So, I'm just wondering if you can think of a way that FPAC could continue to participate in that conversation. And then, secondly, there's a term that's come up a lot now, and it's called designing for net zero. And that is a facilities conversation. And I'm just wondering if it's something that came up in your conversations about energy, and if you had any background to share with us.
To answer your last question first, no. It hasn't really come up in terms of our discussions and the net zero planning. In terms of working with the county, you know, we, every way that we can work with the county, we're behind that. So, I think that that's absolutely the right direction for you to go with that part of it. But there are some things that, that I think, we don't want to lose the opportunity to also look at helping establish contracts that can help us with some of our major maintenance issues. And so, as long as the task force includes that kind of activity in their discussions, that's a good way forward. But I would hate to, for that to get lost with a focus, say, on solar energy only, as a big focus for the county, and not have this other effort for the energy savings performance contracts being explored. And I think the staff is already looking into those, so it's not a new concept for them either.
Thank you. I think it's fair to say that all of that is included in the conversation that we're already having between the county and the schools, and what we'll continue to, because you have to be energy efficient first, you know. And then, what type of energy you use is sort of the second question. So, thank you very much for everything.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to wait for Mr. McElveen to come back, and so I'll take my opportunity to just provide a couple of comments. The first is, I very much appreciate your recommendations for a more comprehensive look at our capital improvement planning, and the inclusion of major maintenance in it, because we have a significant backlog in major maintenance. And unless we actually include it in our integrated planning, I don't think that we will get the attention, frankly, from the Board of Supervisors, because although we have our own capital improvement plan, we actually submit it to the Board of Supervisors, who then incorporate it into their plan. And so, if it's not documented, then it doesn't become a priority for them. So, I think that's an excellent idea. And I also support your concept of greater collaboration between the two boards. It's something that we've made significant headway over the past couple of years on, and look forward to doing more of that. Couple of areas where I didn't see you address, and that was in the conversation about trailers and adding capacity, because you add capacity, and you say that should trigger a look at boundaries. But it's only in adding capacity to the bricks and mortar of a building. Do you have any ideas or thoughts on what we should be doing, if there should be a limit on the number of trailers that are added to a building, before we start thinking about whether we need to do something with that, with the students going, you know, with the population going to that building? And then, the additional question I have is how you would integrate the impact assessment into the introduction of new programs. So, for example, we have 800 trailers, over 800 trailers in the county today. Many of them are the result of us going to an all-day K program. You probably know the number better than I, and if you want to let us know what it is, that'd be great. But we're also seeing a demand in our community that families would like to see more pre-K. And if we were to roll out pre-K, then that would have a significant impact on our capacity as well. So, if you could provide some insights on how you would have a greater collaboration between our instructional programs and our, our capacity planning?
Well, first of all, I think the, the current superintendent's doing a good job of bringing those two parts of his house together, and we've seen some improve, significant improvements in that. And the conversations do happen now that, a few years ago, were not happening between facilities and instructional programs. So, I think that's a very good step in the right direction. Regarding the trailers and capacity, when we count, when we calculate the capacity of a building, we do not include those trailers in that, in that calculation. So, what happens is-
But we do modulators.
Modulators, but not the trailers. So, the trailers house children. Those children are counted in the enrolled population of the school. So, what happens is we see an overcapacity situation, which would lead to, potentially, to a boundary consideration. So, that's how we see those two marrying up. Okay. I would just like to go back to Ms. Hines' question about how we could do energy going forward. And the way we can do that is for Charlie to make a note and make sure that we have somebody focusing on it. We do, we take our charge, and we make sure all aspects of our charge are covered. But we also have other areas of interest that we pursue, so we can put that on the list. If you would like to add something about trailers in specific, just, just let FPAC know the things that you are concerned about, either through your FPAC members directly, and we'll bring them in and make sure somebody deals with it, or through the leadership, which is, at this point, Dan Ammanoff and Charlie Hooky.
And just for those who are in the room from the community, I want to remind everybody that the FPAC meetings are open to the public, and that you actually have a public comment period at each of your meetings. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Excellent. Well, once again, thank you so much for your years of dedication and the innovative and just true dedication. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have Mr. McElveen.
Thank you. And thank you, Karen, for this very graceful swan song. It has been wonderful to hear from you over the years, and for almost a decade of service, we do truly thank you. I want to turn to the topic of major maintenance, which you raised. And I want to get clarity as to whether you are advocating that we actually eliminate the queue and just focus entirely on maintenance?
No.
Okay.
But we do, we have a queue right now that has specific schools listed in it. And I don't think any of us would be comfortable with saying we're going to do anything different than follow our commitment to that. So, if a change is made, it would, it would, in our opinion, not occur until after that renovation queue is complete. But we're getting through that queue. And we need to be looking to the future to determine what's the best way to do the next set of renovations, if you will. And should that be whole-school renovations, or should it be something modified? And I think the problem we ran into before with modified had to do with the fact that it wasn't part of a big overall plan, that it was more someone's judgment, that this is what needs to be done here, and this is what needs to be done there, and people were not really happy with the results.
Right. And I, you know, I agree completely with Sandy on that point. And I think oftentimes, we talk a lot at this table about pendulum swinging, and I don't want to swing it too far back, back in that direction without consideration to what you raised. So, another question, and that, you know, we heard from our student advisory council again this year about the issue that I know Mr. Plattenberg loves to talk about, which is bathrooms. You know, we know that these are the most intense, this is the most intensely-used square footage in all of our buildings. And in the past, about eight years ago, we set aside monies to renovate those bathrooms of schools that are, were still five years or more out of renovation. And I wanted to know, as part of this discussion of major maintenance, if you have thought about how we look again at our bathroom renovation policy, and what your recommendations would be?
Well, that would be simply to fit it into the overall asset management plan. The- The bathrooms probably have some kind of discernible life cycle before they need to be fixed, upgraded, replaced, whatever is the right term for, for what needs to go on. So in an asset management plan, each of your major asset categories would have a life cycle associated with it and the cost of replacing that item over time, over its life cycle. So that's how we would suggest that you work in anything, including bathrooms into that. You have gym floors, you have all kinds of things that-
Right. Well, I think the more, more creative ideas we can have on that point, the better. And then finally, as this is your, your swan song, and after a decade of service, I wanted you to think about and tell us what you believe is the greatest unmet need in our schools and if we could invest in one area, what it would be. And I can imagine what the answer will be, but please give us your thoughts on that.
That, that's really very difficult, because the, the thing that has been of most concern to me over time is watching our major maintenance backlog grow and grow and grow and not be addressed, not even hardly at all. So every year, it just gets worse. So we're digging that hole lots and lots deeper, and we need to get out of it one way or another. So for me, that's been an area where I have really kind of watched, you know, what's going on and what's happening, what can we do about that? I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, if Charlie has something on, on the tip of his tongue.
I would echo the major maintenance, and I would also echo the trailers. And I know that the trailers are a thorn in mostly the parent's side. I don't think the students mind them nearly as much. My children both had trailers, but in a, in a, in an area where population shift for, over a period of time, it's not physically responsible to build huge brick and mortar edifices to accommodate the current life cycle of a generation, 12, 15 years. And some flexible space is going to have to be a, a, a part of the solution. But we may have tipped too far in that direction and, and can do a little better job of, of having less of the temporary trailer.
Well, thank you both, and, and I completely agree with you. As I've said before, I think we've, we're facing the, the greatest crisis our system has faced since the 1950s in terms of facilities, and I've, I've written about that elsewhere. But, you know, I think, again, I just want to echo my colleagues in sharing appreciation with both of you for your past leadership, Karen, and for the future leadership of, of you, Charles. It's been wonderful to work with you and appreciate everything. Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
I too want to thank you for your extended service and patience and thoroughness. I know I was able to work a little bit with you when I first came on the board with CPDC. And I, this is one of those areas where there just is no simple answer. As a former planning commissioner, I, you know, saw the folks that came forward and the concerns that they have, and we can't always, you know, may, perhaps you can speak to this, in terms of what the future looks like for how we can address some of these concerns. I know you have in here some recommendations with respect to boundaries, but I also know, as being a part of the planning commission, we actually looked at the comprehensive plan to, to adjust the language so that we would have more flexibility. So if you could perhaps speak to that as to how in the future we may have to do things a little bit differently in order to reduce trailers, in order to address issues of capacity?
I think the, the, the real difficult part is the money, and we all know that. And it's where does it going to come from and how's it going to be used appropriately? And that's why we believe very strongly that the school system needs to come, get its story together. What are those assets and what are the requirements? And people can understand that, but if we just, you know, tell, the way that we're currently telling our story is not effective in getting any urgency behind the need. And I think we need to develop that urgency, and you do that with facts. So if we have our facts together about what it is that we have in the inventory, what it is that we need, and what that means in terms of our schools and our children's ability to function well in them, then we have a story to tell. But we do a really good job of making things sort of seem like they're working, and staff and the people on the ground are doing a super job with that, but that doesn't make the problem go away. And we, we just need to get that story together.
So I would assume that that story, which I agree with you, understanding the problem, and it's sort of a two-edged sword. And on the one hand, we don't want to alarm our constituents that there's a, you know, emergency of some sort that we can't handle in the process of educating our children. But on the other hand, we do have probably more trailers than we need to have. We can't continue to add trailers to avoid other changes. We don't have the land available to continue to build out. And, you know, people, people are concerned about keeping parks and things of that nature, which are all legitimate concerns. And so certainly I look to your committee and, and your advice, hopefully in the future if we can find you, is in, in finding, telling that story appropriately, because it, we really are in a bit of a conundrum, because on the one hand, we want parents to feel comfortable, but we cannot continue to deal with these concerns in the way that we have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. I have Mr. Moon for a go back.
I was going to ask you two, three questions, but I'm going to limit it to one, just for the time's sake. Countywide boundary study is that, as a someone who has been on the board for a long time along with Mrs. Strauss, that, you know, I can tell you for my colleagues and for public that boundary change is probably the most difficult work the board does and creates emotions on the part of a lot of parents and community members. So now you are recommending countywide, countywide, not just one school, or two schools, or three schools on the regional level, countywide boundary study. Are you also recommending countywide boundary study actually resulting in county, countywide boundary changes?
Well, the question would be whether the study results in changes. But when you look at, number one, we know we need another high school, and we're planning to build one in the western part of the county. It's in the CIP. So when that happens, we're going to have some, have to determine where the boundaries are for that new high school, and that will impact several, if not most, of our other high schools as the ripple effect comes across the county from west to east in revising where those boundaries are. And so in an effort to keep our children in their cohorts, it would ideally be a situation where you look at where the high school boundaries would be, and then where would the middle school boundaries be that would support those high schools, and then which elementary schools would feed into those middle schools? So that you can see the plan that says these elementaries go to this middle or two middles to a high school. And doing that is probably going to create a lot of changes. And we recognize that boundary changes are sensitive, but I, that's why we're suggesting also that, you know, the word get out now, that this is going to happen. It's going to have to happen with a new high school. So let people start recognizing that it's going to happen.
Just a quick follow-up. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that we should not be doing countywide boundary study or boundary changes, but the point is that even with a western county high school, people could argue that depending upon the exact location of the school, that boundary change could be limited to certain areas, certain areas rather than affecting the rest of the county. So limit the scope rather than doing the whole county, because doing the whole county is going to ride up the entire county and sec, and, and also will take a much longer time to come up with a solution for even, you know, any particular score. So-
So what, what we see is that when you look at the Tysons area and the pressure on the high schools in that area, that there can eventually be relief with the western high school changing some boundaries coming across the northern part of the county. We have some high schools in the southern part of the county that are really overcrowded, that need some relief and some help, and they don't have a lot of land for us to build on. So we're not saying every, every boundary has to change, but that it should be looked, looked at as a county project and not just say we're going to just do one quadrant of the county, because there may be opportunities to really help some schools in other parts of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Schultz, you were going to let me know if you had to go back?
I just, a couple of quick points. We don't have the land for, I mean, we keep saying when the west county high school's going to be built. We have no idea because we don't have the land. So, so that's significant. And we don't just have a backlog of major maintenance. We have almost a billion-dollar backlog in building and renovations. And that's what we should be focused on, rather than shuffling the deck chairs on boundaries.
Ms. Strauss?
I didn't know if Ms. Hogan wished to respond to that or not, or is it my turn?
No, it's your turn.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to give a, just a little bit of interesting history. Thirty-five years ago, there was a very large effort in this county that resulted in closing a number of schools. That was the last large countywide look. And in the 1980s, which actually precipitated the, the partial renovation of schools, including Falls Church, there was a sense that Fairfax County was a build-out and that Fairfax County was looked as a spokes, everybody coming into DC to work, and that there would be no more need for any more schools, because there was no more land, and that was that. And I believe we are now 60,000 more students later. And a lot of interest in economic development in Fairfax County, metro, tremendous amount of rethinking on the part of all of the citizens to invite more businesses. A lot of building now and rebuilding of offices, inviting more companies to come and work here, which means more residents, and hopefully good jobs for everybody. So times have changed. We have an urban elementary school at Seven Corners, helping students in Mason. We will build an urban elementary school within Tysons. I'm not sure exactly when, we don't need it yet. We will renovate and reopen Piment, which is one of those schools, and we will renovate and reopen Dunloring, which was one of the closed schools. So for better or for worse, changes upon us, we must respond in the most responsible way. I do agree that we need to get rid of trailers. They are substandard. There are issues not only with safety, but I also think of just quality of, of building in classrooms for our children. Trailers also are paid for out of the operating budget, which competes with salaries for teachers, and that is a huge concern for us. So we did have a follow-on motion with our CIP this year, committing ourselves to working harder to get rid of many of the trailers that we have. And that will take some work to do that, I agree. Major maintenance, which by the way, I still have a speech that I gave in 1989 about major maintenance in our schools. So what goes around, comes around. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
First, I want to thank Ms. Strauss for that history lesson. It is, it is helpful to have that perspective. But I also wanted to tap into your knowledge, Karen, because I know you've worked with these issues for a number of years. And it sounds as, can you clarify, what kind of timeline would you anticipate we're talking about? I mean, we're in a public meeting right now. We've, this, we've had a number of these work sessions, and all of our meetings are, are announced to the public. So with respect to some of the recommendations you have with respect to boundaries and getting rid of trailers, which most parents want to do, and, and having a study done, in your experience, and I would consider you an expert, what timeline would you think that that would take?
Well, I don't want to disavow you of anything, but I don't consider myself an expert on that. But I do think that our staff has a lot of good expertise that could help you understand that question. I think it depends on which things we're looking at and what we're willing to trade off. If we're going to get rid of trailers, we're going to have to build some space. If we're going to build some space, we're not going to be able to renovate as quickly as we want to. So it's all a matter of how do we juggle the finances to achieve the goals? So I would see your job as looking at what are our priorities, which is more important, and then looking at the allocation of the funding to execute against your priorities. And so the timeline would be very different, depending on which way the priorities come out of the board. Nothing is fast, we know that.
Well, I, I, I think that's where I was going. I, I, at least in my thinking, it, part of the reason we're having these meetings is because we know it will take time, and we know it will require discussions amongst board members, and the community will want to participate and have an opportunity to give feedback, and we anticipate all of that. And so I was kind of asking Egan Yuon to help, help folks in this room to understand that that is anticipated as part of the process.
Yes, and FPAC has an important role with the community communication, so I would urge you to take advantage of that as you want things aired in the community, as you want facilities issues discussed and information collected or whatever. FPAC's part of our job is to do that for you.
Thank you. I just very briefly wanted to follow on one of Ms. Keys-Gamara's earlier lines of questioning, and that was, how do we raise public consciousness about our trailer issue? The issue that we have had in the past is that when we raise the issue, we're told that we're making the county look bad. And to be very frank, it's the Board of Supervisors that tells us not to ra, raise issues, you know, where we might not look so good. And I think that has put us in a, in very desperate straits when it comes to this issue. And I think the, the board needs to look beyond politics and raising the issue. Who gives a damn what the Board of Supervisors think when it comes to trailers? It's this board that has to oversee them. In the 1950s, it was Agnes Meyer of the Washington Post who raised the issue, who, who did a deep investigative report into the classrooms and the school buildings of this district. And it took a British daily newspaper to come and look at the issue today to raise it for our community. So I think it not only parallels the decline of local journalism, but when we're having to learn about the issues in our community from The Guardian as opposed to the Washington Post, we have a major issue. So my question is, how do we raise this issue in, in the public conscious, consciousness with, while also realizing that political boundaries have prevented us from doing that in the past?
I, I think when we bring issues to the public, we have an obligation to bring solutions, because if we just say we have 600 trailers and it looks like this, there's nothing that can really be done with that. So perhaps exploring it with the Board of Supervisors and then, you know, making the, the school needs known as part of the county requirements. If you don't get- If you don't get support out of the Board of Supervisors that you need to rid, rid the school system of a lot of these trailers, or any other issue, the major maintenance is another issue. So it's a matter of putting that story together and exploring it with your counterparts, and if that's not successful, I don't see any county employees going to work in trailers. You know? So the question is why are our schoolchildren? So I, I think we have some good arguments, but I, I think once you start establishing a really good relationship board to board, that some of these things are going to be much better to, better dealt with. At least I hope so.
Thank you. And I-
Ladies and gentlemen-
Go ahead.
I apologize. We are trying to get an overflow room set up. We're having a bit of a challenge with the audio feed into the overflow room. And so I'm going to suggest after we finish the FPAC report, that we will take a break so that we can give staff a couple of moments to get that together.
Could I ask, what, what is the capacity of this room? 102?
102, sir, and we are at capacity.
Thank, thank, thank you because-
So, Mr. McElveen, would you like to continue, please?
I can't hear myself think, so no, thank you.
So ladies and, so Ms. Hogan, thank you so much for all you have done for all these years. We are very appreciative, not only of your work, but of Mr. Hookys and Mr. Ammanoff and everybody else on the incredible FPAC. And so we will encourage people to continue watching what you all are doing and participating in the public sessions there, there as well. And we're going to take a short break before we continue on with the boundary discussion, and hopefully you all will want to stay.